And I'll pause the recording for now. You can see it's Ryan and Christine would be seated and Hunter would be on call for his request.
My name is Chairman Frank Langia, Paris, where the field syndicated in the agenda for this meeting. This is a member of the vote access by team video and telephone. Most access to the website, posted on website for the mission members, applicants and other persons. For those listening, I would have to use the device or phone were able to do so. Because we do not get any background information. I'm going to need that will last you on mute. Identify yourself. The number of people, the number of people asking me. Two very important reminders for everyone participating. First, every time you speak, please take the name and title for the record. And then for the second, we must be careful not to speak over one another so that everyone is listening to what is being said. And we have a clear record. For this reason, when it comes to time for the board members to comment and ask questions about a particular agenda, I support the action taken. And then go to the agenda either our plan or we choose all the role when necessary. As indicated, not just the public hearing, but also each application. With applicants, any requests, inspiring question after the public hearing concluded, we will go into the regular. And I hope for listening, but no testimony given. And the board will look at ourselves. Also, this is important for your work. On the website. I'm not going to ask more.
Okay, so Chairman Frank Langia. Vice Chairman Tubbs. Corey Whiteside. And remote, Christine Mizada.
Present.
Present. Ryan Zelik alternate.
Here.
And Hunter Mathina alternate. Is also here, however, he's muted, I believe.
Here, yes. Hereish, however it works.
Thanks. And then just see the two alternates you intend to see for the record, did you do that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. If I may, I think Attorney Coppola has also joined the meeting and may want to speak to the items on the agenda. Those stipulations for judgment, if you don't mind.
Yeah. Good evening, nice to see you. These matters are not going to go forward tonight with regard to this, the proposed stipulated judgment in the matter of Commerce Street Holdings LLC versus the Berlin's EBA. We, we did obviously receive some information from the public today. We are still going back and forth with plaintiff's counsel with regard to the terms of the stipulation. So that matter can go off. Thanks so much and you know, we'll renotice it obviously when it's, when it's ready to go. Thank you.
So my suggestion is that while that's been announced now for any parties that are already here and might be interested in it, that that won't be going forward. If I notice anyone else come in and, and at the time it's, it's turned to go, we'll reannounce that it's been taken off the agenda for tonight, if that's all right.
That's a good idea. Thank you, Maureen.
Berlin's only border deals will hold a public hearing, a special meeting on Tuesday, November 30th, 2021. 2021, Department of Commerce, Department of Commerce, Department of Foreign Affairs, Department of Foreign Affairs. Interested to try and join and participate in first or most of the video and or teleconference divided below. First item on agenda in CBA 2021 dash 22, 345 Ford Road Road. At 15, 1, 91, 18. Jamie Calvo and Taylor Phoenix are requesting a variance of 20 feet from a required rear yard of 40 feet. For Berlin's only regulation 5B5 for installed above ground smooth bowl and an hour 11 zone.
I put the appeal in for the zone because I, they wanted me to go 5P by 5P, but I was trying to save money and go with my decks, where I put a deck on or anything, I didn't have to put a whole other deck in house. And my rear blind, what I, I shed behind the garage, that whole area just softened and rains. But I tried to stay away from that, so I'm afraid of undermining the law.
Let me, I'm trying to pull up the application and I seem to have misplaced it. There we go.
Hey, Tony, it's Kristen. Hey, can you just have everyone state their name for the record so I can just get it for the minutes, please? I just didn't got whoever was just speaking, I didn't got his name. Thank you.
So I brought up the application on the screen that shows the, and Carol, our zoning officer, zoning enforcement officer Carol Schmansky may have more to add, but I brought up the application on the screen with the, with the setbacks. You can see that the pool will be closer than 12 feet from the existing deck or is closer than 12 feet. So therefore it doesn't meet the separation requirements of 12 feet that allow for reduced setbacks. So if it's within 12 feet of the house, the principal setback, which is a 40 foot rear yard, is supposed to be maintained with a 12, 10 foot side yard. They do are maintaining, I guess, the 10 foot side yard, but they only have a 21 foot rear yard that they're proposing to be allowed with this variance because this separation, as I'm showing on the screen, is not 12 feet. And I'm sorry, I wasn't doing a great job of listening while I was trying to wrangle this, but for the record, I trust that you provided a statement with regards to the hardship as to why it should be allowed to be there as opposed to outside of the setbacks. Or more than 12 feet, or more than 12 feet away or meet the setbacks, the, what the hardship is for the record, if it wasn't already done. And it was not, am I understanding, and Carol, maybe you want to take over the conversation about the permits or you weren't here? So do you want me to do it?
When Adam was here, he asked that if you 12 feet away from the principal structure so that we can take advantage of the five foot side yard and the five foot rear yard. And we will give you a way for information for the property. So without a permit, it was installed, so it's installed in their housing or the rear yard areas.
I have four drains in that line, I like to support it with.
Um, I'm just going to comment that I've gotten feedback that it's really hard to hear online. So if everybody can really project their voices, I'm going to try to make sure that we're using the right microphone. Cause that sometimes. Let's try, I'm going to change the microphone, if everybody will be with me for a minute, I'm going to change the microphone and see if that.
Let's try again.
You hear us? Hello?
Absolutely.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so now they can hear you, so it's just project, please, this microphone is up on the top of the screen.
We're in the middle.
Yeah, this, yeah, that's fine.
We're in a rough spot.
White side, I just didn't, I didn't get the, the story on like this had, he, it sounded like he inquired in April. He was told a particular protocol or procedure and then it sounds, it looks to me like he didn't follow it. And now he wants a retro variance.
So by the time I heard something back, it was three and a half weeks and it's my fault. I had the pool put up before I heard talk back, probably about three, three and a half weeks after I applied for it. Then I was wrongly under the assumption, because I put a shed on my property, that I only had to really be five feet off. So I didn't realize I had to be, I couldn't be that close to my, my house. And I would have went for the variance anyways, because I wanted to attach it to the desk to say, I'm putting a deck in. So and that aspect, it is my fault. I should have went for this in the first place.
It sounds, it sounds like you paid a visit to the, to Maureen's office and you were instructed on the protocol. And then, and then you just chose not to follow it.
It was already, when, when I finally came up here and talked to somebody who was already put in. Everything I did when I applied for the permit was all online and I didn't talk to anybody on the phone. So it was all via email by the time I got emails back and everything else. It is my fault. I did put it in too soon, but that's why I'm going for this now.
No, I'm good, thanks.
I think you just, I, I do not. You're still a little hard for me to hear.
Not that much better.
Any other comments or questions? I'll make a motion to close the hearing on this application. One second. I have a motion made in second, Maureen, to share the role.
Well, that's, oh, yeah, you can do this by consensus if you like for closing the hearing, or do you want me to, I'll do the role. That's easier with three, with two people online. Um, Tony Finkland, yeah. Lenny Tubbs.
Hi.
Commissioner Whiteside.
Hi.
Commissioner Mizada.
Hi.
Mr. Zelik.
Hi.
Okay, so it's closed, that would be unanimous to close.
Next application is CBA 2021 dash 23, well, 1427 Berlin, 16-3 block 142 lot 31A. Did I say that correctly? Maureen is looking for the applicant for the 1427 Berlin, turn by application.
I'm not observing him in the building unless he's mistakenly upstairs in council chambers, which one of us, one of us staff can go check in a moment. Um, my suggestion would be that you skip to the next application in the interest of time. And if they're arrived, then we have them come in this, the next, they're not here yet.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, that's Sanaa Viva, I don't know where the best spot to pick up my voice, start by here. That's Sanaa Viva, Sanaa Viva Law Department, 21 Broad Street, America. I represent the owner and applicant, chair members of the board, who I left is downward C, sole member of 224 Berlin, 145 LLC, which is both owner and applicant. Now, the property is an assembly of four parcels, as we know from our application, totaling 18.53 acres inside. There are four separate postal addresses, although again, it is one parcel kind of submerged by us. As part of an overall site of special permanent application, I don't talk to them in a minute. There are again four separate postal addresses for the three existing separate buildings and approved apartment complex. The access off this will grow to 250 Berlin, turn by is the address for accurate of Berlin. By 2016 and 17, 24 Berlin, turn by is the address and it's a postal address. The retail center, which is perpendicular to the turn by, the one that's already built. 196 Berlin, turn by is the address, the second new retail building, the store at the 24, the one that Seating assigned tonight. The whole four fiscal, the address for the apartment complex and it's not been built, it was approved as part of, part of a special permit on September 5, 2019 by your funding. So this evening, chair members of the board, the applicant requests appearance of section nine of your regulation regarding freestanding signs. The applicant desires a third freestanding sign designed as shown on the suspicion, provide the identity of tenants in the new retail building. 2017, when the applicant built his car dealership and the first retail building, when the parcels were not yet merged in that piece, what an eight acre parcel. And we came before you, we approved the request for a second freestanding sign for the retail center. That was appealed 2017, oh six, that's 13. I've got to update that. Pretty right, you're approved in 2017. This wasn't in my pack. The reason I offer that, chairman members of the board, obviously 2017 decision, because much of the argument was the same again here tonight, is argued in 2017. And as part of our accusations to this appeal, the applicant argued that additional freestanding sign will reduce any public safety concerns that can exist because of the nature of the development, I'll explain that further. Where is here the signage that's designed without by buildings? And primarily for the motorists traveling along at significant speed on highways and relatively modest pedestrian traffic at this location, well imagined. Such signage provides motorists with sufficient advanced notice of the location of the business that you wish to enter or attempt. And here, rather than seeing wall signage only as they drive by the building for the tenant, they see this located possibly causing them, uh, motorists to slow down or create some other traffic problems. Freestanding sign, the tenant directly creates a safer environment. I know this board, don't talk about that in your comments back in 2017 and again. Same way, see, this is a signage such as this encourages safe access to the site. Parties know where to point to the site. And I think it's open to all of you know that remain when, when a property doesn't have a, your safe access, I'll find a replacement shop. It needs to know that if you're not creating a problem getting to a patient. And from this work experience perspective, you want to make sure that access is friendly and the site is, it's only assist. Now, obviously having not merged the parcels prior to our application, there were four pieces with the title before assigned. This merger is part of the full world, you know, by 12 and 2019. Hopefully with the design of the tenant, the design of the transit will be providing attractive or certain traction. The building, the building is very attractive, it's the one that will all be a positive development for the common borough. And of course, the sign provides with all your height, your clothing requirements. And they've got the requirement about illuminating signs to make sure that the only certain percentage of the sign that is white, any sign, any panels on the sign where there isn't a current tenant would be blackness, there would be no, no light exposed for that. Apply with all of the regulations. Now, if I, John, if I can turn to John in 75 words about how well things have formed, consultation on the Berlin.
Yeah, the way the building position, you, as you come down, probably it won't be able to see the sign that you have on the other side. There's more than it's sold in your building. The lady who's here, one of the building, the side, this new building, we're facing the door. And, and I'm bringing in, um, like some. Phil and Williams, long term tenant, have a new, new lunch in that. I'm sure after race, we have almost 59 hundred square feet left.
We're excited about the involvement in that location, I think we've taken, or John's always taking a location that prior to 2016 may have looked a little different than it does today. Thank you.
I understand your presentation because I would love to take a look at it. We have copies.
Any, if I may, does anybody need me to bring up the plans on the screen or anything? Are you good? And Chris, I believe is asking to speak as well.
Thank you, commission members, I just wanted to take a moment, I've been working with the property owner for a while. They made a large investment in the second retail building, already have tenants coming in place and just would ask that you look favorably upon this. I know it is a third sign on the property, but it will help a lot. And having the national tenant, including the real estate agencies can be really exciting for us. So that's my thoughts in support of what they're doing. Thank you.
Ryan?
I'm good.
I'm fine.
Yep. Christine, if you're speaking, you're still on mute, but your little screen.
Oh, I, I said, yep, maybe I hit it. Yep, yep, yep. Okay, thanks.
You have any comments?
One second.
Chairman Frank Langia.
Hi.
Vice Chairman Tubbs.
Hi.
Commissioner Whiteside.
Hi.
Commissioner Mizada.
Hi.
Commissioner Zelik.
Hi.
So that was unanimous. So I would ask that you again announce that the administrative appeal has been not going to be heard tonight. I don't believe we have any other interested parties here or on the recording, but I just wanted to reannounce that. The administrative appeal will not be heard this evening for 30 to 36 and 86 Commerce Street. No.
Not online or present here. Okay, I'll go along to CBA 2021 dash 27, 861 Farmington Avenue. At 91 block 76, block 79. Tony Valenti is requesting a bearing for a freestanding sign for a side yard of three feet, 50 is required for a freestanding sign for Berlin, 93 East Street. And the CC 16, the property is owned by 861 Farmington Avenue LLC. And speaking for the application, here, commission members, if Tony, you want to be principal of these four realty group, we have corporate office of located 710 A Street, Suite 11 in Plantville, where the.
We have corporate office of located seven ten A Street, Street eleven in Plantville, where the owners of eight sixty-one Farmington Avenue. On behalf of ownership and the commercial tenant, eight sixty-one Farmington Avenue, which is silk waxing spot and premier medical aesthetics. We're respectfully requesting a waiver concerning the side yard requirement for a freestanding non-illuminated sign. Current, current requirement is a setback of ten feet from the side yard. We're, we're, we're requesting the sign of three feet in the side yard. The proposed sign is a three by five sign, three feet tall by five people. It's a women's, a women's product with white lettering and sort of the. White background, black lettering, no illumination. And the sign does sit off the ground by about twenty-four inches, so the site, the sign will be. About five people fall off the ground. Up our back. Up our back from the, from the road.
Trying. Carol, is the plan stand? Carol? I'll work on that, but in the meantime, while I'm looking, I'll pull up the aerial view.
This is a property area here. I think the property line here. Yeah, this is, this is the old property here. In terms of our hardship, the neuro, your width and depth of the property is a pretty tight site. Also, definitely, the even area that the construction nation has along Farmington Avenue. We couldn't find any of the location in the front yard of that particular property where we could place a sign, thank you. Where we could place a sign that would meet zoning regulations. And one last time, we just finished a pretty major renovation of eight sixty-one Farmington Avenue. So we also installed a favorite lock which allows customers to come to the parking lot to see the business. That, that paper lock had to be installed at a width and a location. In a fish to allow not just typical customers, but also many staff customers. So please pull that sign, you deserve your way in the West property line. Because again, whatever that is. Now, coming out, the site I was there, but the pitch actually decided on it. Property, so even one of that sign that location, it couldn't be anyway. But as you can see, I also noticed ours is canceled investment in improving that property as well. Freestanding, completely renovate that building right now. So residential tenants, we're really proud of that building. We just think this sign is going to help them, help this new company.
Okay, so I was able to find the one you sent it to me from. Um, and if, if I may give. Then a recap, here's the sign. The proposed sign, the existing sign was right on or off the property line. Right there where the hand is, was the sign that the business had previously used before the property was. We. What's the word I'm looking for? Not renovated, well renovated, but part of the redevelopment. Part, part of the redevelopment of the whole downtown, that whole area there. Um. Again, the front of the building here is. Eighteen feet back from the property line, so to meet the ten feet as well as be compliant. They chose this area to find a location more compliant than the existing building sign was. Um. And I can zoom in if it'll let me now, it didn't let me in the video. It's not letting me zoom. All right.
Time zero, that wasn't the problem. That's where Mary Bakery and all that stuff were down, isn't it?
But I don't believe that that, this property line, I don't believe has changed. I think the property, so it was non-compliant by being. And that's neither here nor there actually for the application, but I wanted to give you the background.
Any other questions, comments regarding the application? This is a non-lighted sign?
Chris is asking to speak. Chris is asking.
Thank you, yes, thank you very much. Yes, just in support of this, this is the last piece of the puzzle. They've taken a, a building, made it more beautiful, done a lot of work, and the signage is the last piece to help. Not just the property owner, but the tenants in place and just appreciate what they're doing and ask for your support of this application. Thank you.
If I may, for the, for the record as well. The properties all together, the properties all together there with the adjacent property. Was part of a settlement agreement as far as the development goes to make the, this whole front area. Um. A grass and the, the entrance to the building, redirect the parking and, um. What I like to comment on is reduce the paved land along and, and continuous curb cuts along Farmington Avenue. Um, in that reorientation. Um, and for the purposes of signage zoning on regulations. It's an unfortunate occurrence was that where the sign was proposed conflicted with the. Location that the sidewalk evidently had to be put in regard for, for the purposes of the pitch. And code compliance. And therefore, we worked, from the staff standpoint, we did work with the applicant. To try to find alternative lucky locations that would be in compliance. Um, and this was the alternative location most in compliance with the approved plan, but it's still non-compliant with the regulations. Um, the plan approved through the, the settlement agreement. A lot had a sign that would be in the middle of the sidewalk, basically, at this point. Um. And would have met the side yard, but can't be there because code said the sidewalk has to be there.
Commissioner Whiteside, and to that point, my question was then that, that new turf area in front, you cannot be compliant by placing a sign in that turf area?
Yeah, is this what you mean?
No, in front of the sidewalk.
So that would be too close, the, the signage regulations call for signs along Farmington Avenue to be within ten feet of the front of the building. And no further than twenty feet for the furthest edge of the sign. So they've made it compliant at nine feet and change from the building. Um, and meeting the front setback, but that made them not meet the side setback.
Basically, the lesser of two equals. Any additional questions? All right, outside?
Yeah.
Thanks, Commissioner. Um. Any other comments or questions? Make a motion. Have a motion made, the votes in force in the hearing? I'll flip the motion.
Chairman Frankelandia?
Hi.
Vice Chairman Tubbs?
Hi.
Commissioner Whiteside?
Hi.
Commissioner Mazada?
Hi.
Mr. Zellek?
Hi.
Unanimous to close the meeting?
Okay, we're going to go into all business and vote on the applications that we have heard.
I guess. Commissioners, just to let you know, I'm sorry to interrupt, it's Chris Edge. Um, I just got a text message from Admirer from fourteen twenty-seven Berlin Turnpike, he's trying to call in right now. Apparently, his architect did not make it tonight and he at least wanted to say a couple of words, I don't know if that's still possible.
Go ahead. Yeah, that application is fourteen point seven Berlin Turnpike and. The applicant is appealing the order of the D E O to remove it by forty foot.
Can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Admirer, I'm one of the owners of M C Barber Academy. To be honest, I actually did forget about the meeting tonight, but John was supposed to be there, John Turello, our architect. And I've been calling him and usually he gives me a call before he's going to come in or the previous meetings that we've been there. Usually does give me a heads up anyway. Um, but I haven't heard from him tonight, so I'm not sure what's going on. It's a kind of unlike him, so. I just, I don't know if we can reschedule somehow or, you know, once I get ahold of him, then I'll know a little better. What's going on.
My comments are that we were expecting this application to be resolved by a site plan amendment. That were, or this appeal to possibly be resolved through a site plan amendment application that they've made with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, however, at the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, while they. Began the discussion, they asked to be continued to the next meeting. And therefore, it wasn't addressed at that meeting. Um, we are as a staff, I think reasonably prepared to support our, the appeal, or rather, the, the order that was sent out. Um, however. And Carol may have a different, may want to speak to this as well, however, I would not have an ejection to. Um, postponing this until if, with the applicant wanting to do so, they'd have to actually be the one to agree to it as well. Um. But until after the Planning and Zoning Commission was able to take a look at their site, the site plan. That, um, shows what in essence is the shipping container on, remaining on the property despite the order to remove it.
Okay.
Or you can hear the appeal for that site plan, I mean, for the, the order. I think Admirer has something else to add up to you, chairman, if you want to call on him. Say anything. You should decide whether you're going to speak to it or not.
Oh, yeah, we, we got open that before, but nobody was here. We never opened.
You didn't open it, you just, you, you paused it to, to wait to the max, or you skipped it. In, in my, that's what I got from the record was we're skipping, you, to this point have skipped it.
Let's open the fourteen point seven Berlin Turnpike application. The only thing I need to know is whether or not he can speak in. And, uh, he can speak for the applicant if he ever.
If you open the application, then he is the applicant. He is the owner of the property that got the, the order. John Turella is his representative. Isn't that, oh, this is Admirer, they're brothers.
Oh, yeah.
And has can speak, has consistently spoken to applications, um. Although I don't know, are you on the property? Are you a, a title holder on the property? Do you have the authorization?
I'm the, not the property owner, I'm one of the, the LLC owners, I'm a partner on the LLC.
So it was the. Um, the L L, the, the, the business, I believe, got the order as well.
LLC that also owns the property, my business is that.
Yes. I'm part, I'm part of M C Barber LLC.
He is part of M C Barber LLC.
So we've opened, especially opened the fourteen point seven Berlin Turnpike application. At this point. Our options are to.
To hear the, the reasoning for the appeal and the zoning officer's defense. Or to. Um. Cable it to, until his representative is here, if that's what he so chooses. And, and you choose, it's got to be a mutual agreement because this is a, a appeal, so the commission or the board is. Has the timeline as well as the applicant.
We need it in writing, don't we?
You can tell it on the, on, at the hearing.
For the applicant to hear. Or the actual applicant that is supposed to speak at this. To this application.
It's not an application, though. I mean, whether we're, we've got to hold the, the.
Uphold the appeal. Yeah, he has a professional representative who is not present, however, the business representative is, is present. In Admirer.
Yes. Yes, I would like to request that we can reschedule the next meeting if possible. Because he's really the one dealing with everything. You know, he's the one presenting all the information, then I just, I don't know, I just can't get ahold of him tonight for some reason. I hope it's nothing serious with him, you know, but. It's just unlike him to. You know, not even, uh, give me a call or a heads up. Even if I don't come to the meeting, he would let me know what's going on.
We, if I.
What's the timeline?
Good, there is not a timeline with regard to. To the best of my knowledge, no timeline, but if they ask for the request, we can add the, we can use extension time if that's applicable. I don't believe it's applicable on this kind of application, however, it is an outstanding zoning violation. So of course, staff would like to get it resolved, however, I do think that it may be resolved by their planning and zoning commission. Um, site plan amendment and therefore perhaps it, the appeal could potentially be withdrawn. Of the order and they'll come into compliance. Um, if I may ask, the CEO, have you received any correspondence from the applicant today? Do you know of?
Not today, but last week when I spoke with the architect, I asked him if he was willing or if he was going in the direction of another postponement. And he said, no, absolutely not, I'm going to show up at the meeting, which is why we prepared for this meeting. And then I sent an email to M C Barber today and I'm very surprised.
Which email did she send it to, do you know, because?
That, I think that we'll have to do that administrative thing. Later to make sure we have the right email, but.
Yeah.
You know, the point is it went out, because we'd have to look it up and we're not, she doesn't have access to her computer in the meeting room.
Okay.
Um, so, and I, in summary, I guess staff would not be opposed to postponing it. Um. However, we may ask for a meeting to that, prior to the end of January, if this is not resolved. Because he can, because the, the violation continues over the terms of a postponement.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, well, they, they asked for a postponement of planning zoning, but yet pulled her there to be yours. It's kind of confusing.
Does P, how does P and Z resolve a container on a property?
So it would. Um, they're looking at an application that shows it as. Um, being proposed as a site plan amendment for a structure on the property and an interpretation that it could be a structure. On the property as opposed. on the property as opposed to a container. Or perhaps have an additional condition that it be removed or what, you know, with, that's remains to be heard at that hearing, at that meeting. Thursday, I think. Is it on Thursday? No. I don't recall if it's on Thursday or if it was postponed, or if it was moved to the 16th.
When I talked to John last, he did say there was a meeting, it was Tuesday for this one, and then that one was on Thursday coming up.
Thursday.
Remember him saying Tuesday and Thursday of the same.
So we do expect to hear it on Thursday.
Okay.
I didn't bring that agenda with me either. It would take a motion to continue it.
I just say if we postpone this, it doesn't go past December, if it has to come back here.
Wouldn't be till January. It would be January. I mean, at this point.
Yeah, it wouldn't go past then, then.
I guess January is my final cutoff. That's what we're saying, because there's no meeting in December.
Alternatively, the board can request a special meeting to be scheduled.
I generally would agree with Ryan.
Christine, you're on mute, if you're talking. Yep. Christine, could you unmute and and re-reply again? I think you tried, but we only caught.
Yes, I'm in agreement. I did. Yes, I'm in agreement. I'm just, whoever that is speaking, I can't, I really can't hear them. Like, it's so far away, so I apologize.
You'd need a second and a second and a vote if that's.
This is Christine Mizada. I second.
Chairman Frank Langia.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Tubbs.
Aye.
Commissioner Whitehead.
Aye.
Chairman Mizada, I mean, Commissioner Mizada.
Aye.
And Commissioner Zelik.
Aye.
So the motion would carry four to one to postpone to the next scheduled meeting. Or postpone to January.
All right, thank you.
Then can I just comment again? I think there's someone on the line for the application that was put off the administrative appeal, and that has been put off to the next meeting. I just want to reannounce that, that the administrative appeal for our Commerce Street Holdings has been postponed and will be re-noticed. If anyone is on that's interested, party with regard to that application and chooses not to participate further. Yeah, sorry. Thank you for letting me make that announcement again.
Okay. DVA 2021, 345, quarter by real, Jimmy Calvo and Taylor Davis. 20 people required, three yards, forty feet, the Brolin's Honor Regulation 5B5 were installed above Brolin's Honor and our 11th. Have a motion to approve this application.
I'll make the motion to approve the application.
My second application. I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Not hearing anybody. You could roll.
Chairman Frank Langia.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Tubbs.
Aye.
Commissioner Whitehead.
Nay.
Um, Commissioner Zelik.
Aye.
And Commissioner Mizada.
Aye.
So that's another four to one vote, with the motion carries.
Okay. DVA 2021 dash 23, postpone. DVA 2021 dash 26, John Davis. A lot, thirty eight times, two twenty four Brolin Turnpike, single lot, or one big end side of the lot for Brolin's Honor Regulation 9A to 3. I'll second.
Chairman Frank Langia.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Tubbs.
Aye.
Commissioner Whitehead.
Aye.
Aye, was that?
Aye, Whitehead.
Thank you. Commissioner Mizada.
Aye.
Mr. Zelik.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good holiday.
Chairman Frank Langia.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Tubbs.
Aye.
Commissioner Whitehead.
Aye.
Mr. Mizada.
Aye.
Mr. Zelik.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Happy holidays. Thank you. I acknowledge you. Thank you.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you, Chris. One other item. We have a minute from the. October meeting. Yeah, October meeting. Members present, my folks, Chairman South, Chairman. Papa Medina, Christine Mizada, and the other members were absent, so I guess there was three of us here.
Those four were.
Four.
Four plunders available, but regardless.
I'm here.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the special meeting minutes for October 19, 2021. This was a Zoom meeting that was held. I think we reviewed the sign for current realty, signed it 979, permanent avenue, to reform. I think that was the only argument I'm understanding.
Commissioner Medina and Commissioner Mizada.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay. Take care of that. And we have the October 26, 2021 minutes. Myself, Vice Chairman Tubbs, Corey Whitehead, Christine Mizada, and Ryan, we're all here at that meeting. I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Commissioner Zelik, you okay with that, minutes?
Yes, yep.
And Commissioner Whitehead.
Aye.
I think we're okay with that. Only other thing left is the calendar. I think. I'm running a partner officer, Cheryl. Has a calendar here for the 2022 schedule. I think you've already seen it. January, for the market, July, August, no meeting. November, November, and December, no meeting. Does anybody have any issues with that? Pretty much the same every year.
Yeah, all good.
Can, for the record, can we have a motion to add it to the agenda, unless I'm missing it on the agenda? Look, we would first, if you're going to vote on the calendar for next year, we would need you to add it to the agenda and then have a vote on it.
We will add the agenda item.
Motion.
A motion to, I make a motion to add the agenda. A motion made seconded to add the calendar to the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Now that we've added that to the agenda items, does anybody have any issues with the calendar for 2022? Well, see now, Breville will be deceased. But does anybody have any issues with the calendar for 2023? August and December are no meeting.
For the record, it appears as though Commissioner Whitehead has left the meeting.
Yeah, he did. But we also, we still have Commissioner Mizada, Commissioner Zelik. Does anybody have any issues with the calendar? If not.
Nope, let's do it.
Nope, no issues.
Okay. Other than that.
A motion. You need a motion.
Need a motion to approve the calendar for 2022. I'll make that motion. I'll second it. Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mizada, aye. Carries with four, anyway.
Okay, who carried that?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
We all good? Anything else?
Mizada, aye.
We good, Maureen?
I don't believe we have anything else. Carol.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
You too, Tony.
Happy holidays. Don't eat too much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Maureen.
Thank you.